Good Thursday evening. I had to think which day it was. Call to the order, the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Board of Trustees is now convened in the board work session on Thursday, December 10, 2020, at 6:00 PM in the boardroom of Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Instructional Support Center, located at 10,300 Jones Road, Houston, Texas, for the purpose of reviewing that portion of the Monday, December 14, 2020, regular board meeting agenda designated as action items and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notice as required by Texas law. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve those concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to items in tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on Comcast Channel 16 and the district website. They will also be available as video on demand on the district website following tonight's meeting. For the video to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode, which is what I'm doing again right now. So everybody, please join me and turn them off, please. Thank you for taking the time to join us for this evening and for your interest in the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize our community leadership committee member who is also in attendance this evening, Mr. Ryan Irving. Mr. Irving, always dressed dapper. It's good to have you here, sir. The invocation, pledge of allegiance, vision and mission statement, recognitions, board comments, citizen participation and reports portion of the agenda will be presented at the regular board meeting on Monday, December 14, 2020. At this time, we will proceed with the public comments portion of the agenda. We did not have anyone sign up, is that correct? Oh, we got one, I'm sorry. Patrons who are duly registered per policy BED local may address the board and make public comments on an agenda item during or before the board's consideration of the item. The board may allow public comment on agenda items at all meetings. The board will continue with the remaining agenda after the registered patrons have had an opportunity to speak. So tonight, we do have one speaker, it's Nikki Coward. Nikki?
I first want to share that we at the Cyfair American Federation of Teachers send our thoughts and well wishes to trustee Saravia tonight as he heals from routine surgery earlier this week. I think that we can all agree that 2020 continues to be a gut punch to many of us, and the COVID-19 pandemic has only made that what might normally be difficult under normal circumstances even more anxiety ridden. Our union members were encouraged, however, when the agenda for tonight's work session was posted. This being the very last work session before the end of the year, one agenda item in particular, item 9B, the board considering authorizing to add additional local leave days for COVID quarantine for the spring semester. None of us are certain on what federal or state guidelines or assistance might look like when we return in January, but we do know the tireless work of all Cyfair ISD employees since the pandemic began has been essential to servicing all of our students. Many teachers in particular have risen up and taken on challenges this year like never before. So keeping the basic safety standards and the current lead safety plan will be imperative for employees to continue to do this work. The last thing that we want teachers, bus drivers, food service workers, or heroic custodial staff to worry about is their paycheck should they become ill. In January, when our legislature convenes again, our AFT union is ready to do what we have always done. We have always stood shoulder to shoulder with administrators and trustees as our goals and legislative agendas do overlap when it comes to the betterment for our kids. We have shared goals and continue to work together with parents and community members. That is what keeps our district moving forward. I believe, I still believe, Cyfair ISD is the best school district in Texas. I am a proud Cyfair ISD graduate and chose to raise my four boys here as well. Health and safety is the most talked about issue still among our union families, and we hope to see the board take action on this item.
Thank you, Nikki. Before we proceed, I would like to let the viewing audience know that each month during the board work session, the administration provides oral reports on various departments in addition to the reports outlined in the district's board monitoring system. The board monitoring system, a mechanism to measure the district's progress in achieving goals, may be viewed on our website under aboutus/districtimprovementplans/goals. The board will now proceed with the consensus action items portion of the agenda. Can y'all hear me okay with the mask on? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Eight, action items. The board will consider approving the minutes of the November 9, 2020, regular board meeting. The board will proceed with the non-consent action items portion of the agenda. 9A, the board consider and take action on an amendment to the employee compensation plan to include the LEAD safety retention stipend at the board work session on Thursday, December 10. A presentation tonight by Dr. Henry and Karen Smith. Dr. Henry?
Mr. Covey, I just wanted to clarify that we are taking action on this tonight?
Yes.
And it was posted as such. So Mark, if you want to say something real quick?
Yeah.
We're just following up on the public hearing from last month.
Yes, just to make sure that, excuse me, let me get that off my ear. Trustees know that we heard you last month when you stated that you wanted to make sure everyone who's contributing to this most difficult year gets some type of retention bonus. So we kind of designed two different plans to make sure that we could meet those. And Marnie, are you going to start off by giving an explanation or is Sharita going to do that?
Well, Sharita and I tag teamed a little before, and in the interest of brevity, because you know, I'm known for brevity, I was going to start. But just to clarify, we had our public hearing last month, as everyone knows, and that's what we're required under the statute to do. We didn't take action, however, but we did state the public purpose and fulfill those obligations. In part, is that we wanted to figure out a way to address the board's goals of having every employee have the opportunity. And so in order to do that, we can do the retention stipend, as we determined last month during the public hearing would be appropriate. And that's for full and part-time employees who are in regularly allocated positions and who were at least employed with us by October 31 and still with us by the end of the month, so Karen's team could get the payroll ready. And that check will come as a separate check by next Thursday or Friday?
Thursday.
Thursday. So, and then we also included in that these additional instructional support positions that were allocated just this year at the will and direction of our board to give our campuses as much support. So those were people who were otherwise support positions such as temporary workers or substitutes, and they committed to work every day at a particular campus, show up every day through the remainder of the year. So it's those individuals who are also included in the retention stipend for, you know, retention for the spring semester. But to address the board's desire to have everyone have an opportunity to earn some sort of stipend, then we, Sharita, Deb, they put their heads together with Karen's team, and we have a longevity stipend. And so, and I may lean on Sharita a little bit to clarify if you have any questions, but it's going to be for those designated employees and who were instrumental in continuity of instruction. And so it's going to be the temporary workers and the substitutes who work with us through the spring semester and accrue set amounts of days of service. And that will allow them the ability to earn a sliding up to $500 stipend, depending upon, you know, how much they want to work. And then we'll also, we'll be able to capture those employees, for instance, say we've got a long-term sub, that position comes available and they slot into it and become a full-time employee with us, you know, say at some part in the spring. We don't want to miss them either. Deb caught that. And so, you know, we have included in that definition, every other employee should have the opportunity at the end of the spring semester to earn the longevity stipend.
Okay.
Anything else I need to clarify, Shar? If you have any questions, I'm going to make sure you answer them.
Y'all, that was really brief from Marnie, and I appreciate that.
Just one clarification of Marnie's clarifications is it's next Thursday, just not today, and I just wanted to make sure any employees that may be watching, it's not today that the check will be in your bank account, it's next Thursday. So just make sure.
Can I take action for a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
And just to clarify, say, our itinerant counselors at work, are they included in this group that will receive one in the spring?
They're allocated positions.
Okay, they're allocated positions.
Yes, I'm going to reach out.
So as long as they're allocated positions?
That is correct. So if the physician shows up on a campus or a department staffing sheet that's been approved by central office, then those individuals will be the one that will receive the retention or the lead safely stipend.
In the spring?
No, ma'am. In the lead safely, December 17.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you.
And then I think it's roughly, Ms. Blackshear, I think it's 1,400 employees roughly that will be eligible to earn the stipend in the spring. Correct me if I'm wrong, Sharita.
That is correct.
And clarify again, real quick, Sharita, those are the temporary and substitute workers.
We have a group of employees, and we're going to call them supplemental employees. Those supplemental employees do include substitutes, temporaries, that work on a campus for a variety of different reasons, work in departments for a variety of different reasons, but they're all very, very much a part of our district continuity and operations, especially during COVID. So yes, the longevity stipend will include those individuals, and as Dr. Henry said, that's about 1,400 people that will be, may be eligible for that.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve non-consensus action items 9A as amended?
Mr. President, I move that the board of trustees authorize the superintendent to add additional local leave days to DEC local for employees for COVID quarantine and isolation for the spring 2020 semester, and the amount and for the duration determined necessary in the superintendent's discretion.
I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Anybody have any questions or make any concerns right now? Then we'll take a vote, I'm sorry.
Well, what I would say is that's the next agenda item, and I, I mean, we've already done it, so let's, if you guys don't have any question about the leave days, that's, we can certainly do that. I was, and then we can come back to the stipend, because they're really very closely related to one another. So as Dr. O., you know, said in the motion, that is the extension of the local leave days, because as you know, the CARES Act gave additional days. We, this board said to us, hey, this ends in December, you know, what about, you know, what about the spring? And as we said to you all in August, we committed to come back to you in December if the federal government didn't take care of our people you wanted us to. So that's that motion. So we can table that if you would like and go back to the other one and then pick that one up, or you can vote on this one too. But they're very closely tied.
It's okay if we do 9A and 9B together?
No, they would be separate through the motion. I'm saying if you want to make the motion on the other one and go ahead and vote on it, that's fine. Otherwise, we can table it and go back to the first one.
So we're on the 9A, is that correct?
Yeah, let's do 9A first, that's fine.
9A, thank you. So I have a motion and I have a second.
Well, we need to go, she said go to 9A first.
Well, let's go ahead and table that, so let's go back to 9A.
Okay.
We're going to table it.
I'm trying to go too fast here. Okay.
It's okay.
Dr. O.?
They're related.
Want to make a motion on 9A?
Yeah, I'll do it. I move that the board of trustees authorize the amendment to the employee compensation plan presented during the November 2020 public hearing to include a one-time stipend payment in December for all eligible full and part-time employees in the amount of $500 for full-time employees and $250 for part-time employees in order to address morale, retention, and the enhanced duties and requirements in the lead safety plan, and that the board hereby acknowledges the public purpose served by this stipend upon authorization.
Have a motion, thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Ms. Blackshear, I have a second. Now, does anybody have any questions at this point?
And for clarity, even though we don't require the amendment, I would also say, if y'all would like to make a friendly amendment to that motion to also include the longevity stipend as described, that way if there's any questions, we can, you know, we'll have it in the minutes to go back. But if a trustee would like to make that friendly amendment, Mr. Jackson maybe?
I move that we amend the motion on the floor to include the longevity stipend as outlined this evening.
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Blackshear. Now, we're going to vote on the friendly amendment. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. That's unanimous. And now we can go on and vote on the original motion. Anybody have any questions or concerns? Nope, seeing none. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Both of those passed. Thank you very much. 9C, the board will consider waiving provisions.
Mr. Covey, since we tabled 9B, the motion is on the table, it's been seconded. So is there any questions, are there any questions about that?
Wow, okay.
Can we have an overview of that topic before we vote on it, please?
Teresa, you're exactly right. Teresa said we were actually planning on voting on that on Monday, so let's just go ahead and leave that mo, just withdraw that motion and move forward.
It's a brief presentation on Monday, right?
Yeah, we are going to, Sharita was actually going to, she's got a little bit she can tell you about.
Sharita, do you want to, Ms. Heineman had asked for an explanation briefly, so why don't we give them a little explanation?
April 1 of this year, the, as Marnie said, the federal government implemented the Family First Coronavirus Response Act. Within the FF-CRA, there are paid leave entitlements. Those paid leave entitlements will end December 31, 2020, pending the federal government reinstating those. We are asking the board to implement a paid leave entitlement to cover those employees that may have to quarantine or isolate related to COVID-19.
For the spring semester.
For the spring semester. So this would be January 1 through June 30, 2021.
Is that good enough? Julie, you okay?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
And that this is, we are trying to be proactive in case the federal government does not extend these benefits. This is a federal government program that we are concerned may not be extended, so we're trying to be proactive so that we can provide these additional days to our employees in case the federal program is not extended. Is that correct?
Yes.
So it's not that we are cutting the current program we have or that we're, we're just trying to ensure that that safety net is there for those extended paid sick days for our employees in the, in case the federal government does not extend their program.
That is correct. So when the act was put in place, April 1, it already had an expiration date of December 31, 2020. We're being proactive like most districts and going on and asking the board to extend that in the event the government does not extend it.
Thank you.
Correct.
Just to added clarification, it's not required. We're doing it and locally funding it, so if the government, as Sharita said, does not come through, we're asking the board to make sure that we provide this benefit to our teachers in the spring, our employees, excuse me.
And Julie, that's why the proposed motion that we will do on Monday says that it's, the board's given the superintendent the authority to add under the policy. So if there's something done over the winter break and, you know, it's extended or something, then the superintendent won't have to act.
Right, right. I appreciate the clarification.
But we're getting that authority now.
Yes, we received several emails from concerned employees, and I think there was some misunderstanding of what we were talking about. So I appreciate the clarification. And while we, of course, welcome feedback and emails from employees, I think it's important that folks understand that perhaps we should also be contacting our federal representatives who actually can control whether or not this, the act is extended, or if the expiration date is allowed to occur at the end of the year. So I would hope in addition to contacting us, that we are also contacting the folks that are actually responsible for this.
Just, again, I apologize. A couple of things. This is a good thing. This is a good thing for our employees. This just goes to the, what this board is doing, the stipend that you just approved is a good thing. The remote learning days that allow our teachers to have time to plan is a good thing. All the PPE, I mean, I could go down the list of things that this board has done to try to make this most challenging year as tolerable as it can be. So four words, this is a good thing. Is that four words or five?
And it's something our board said, you said you were going to do in August, so you're just keeping your promise to your employees if the, you know, if they don't take care of you, we will.
Okay, so we'll not be voting on this tonight, this will be voted on on Monday. Are there any other questions on this? Mr. Jackson?
Yes, Mr. President. Point of clarification, general counsel said that this was a tabled motion, but I don't know that the motion was ever on the floor. And if it was, then we need to have a board member move to table the motion. That has to be seconded and then have to be voted on. So I don't know if it's a live motion or not, but if it is, we have to have a motion to table it, second, and vote. Well, the explanation, though, was that this is not an action item for tonight. Yes, sir, I understand that, but if a motion's on the floor, it doesn't go off the floor until we take it off the floor.
Well, just to cover ourselves.
You can withdraw it. If we need to do that as a formality.
Well, we had a motion and a second.
I withdraw the motion.
The second also has to be withdrawn.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're clear. Okay. You know, y'all are confusing me up here, I'm just going to tell you. So do we want to move 9B to consent or have it stand alone?
Have it stand alone.
Stand alone, sir.
Thank you. All right, we handled that well. 9C, the board consider waiving provisions in BE local board meetings for the remainder of 2020 through 2021 school year. Dr. Henry?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Covey. This is something that Mr. Covey had talked to me about, and I know one of the things that we've done here as a district is we've eliminated all unnecessary or maybe extra meetings that we would generally have during a school year just as an added safety, safety measure. So for instance, a lot of the CNI, curriculum and instruction meetings we have, if we have them, we do them via Zoom, we don't do them in person. A lot of the administrative meetings we have, we've just eliminated. So we've tried to eliminate as many distractions as possible to campuses for safety reasons and also to keep our teachers and our staff on campuses and not off campuses. So this is simply, if the board chooses to go this route through, up to the remainder of this year through June, of just having one board meeting a month, again, to kind of follow along that idea of reducing meetings. So I'll let you add anything, Mr. Cove.
Well, I just, it just seemed to make sense, especially when you're trying to reduce the number of in-person meetings for staff. And so this just made sense. And honestly, y'all present such excellent information to us in a board meeting, it didn't seem like that was going to be a negative for us. It's not something I would like to see permanent, but I would like to see until we've got some control of this COVID. And I will express our sincere appreciation to our schools and our principals and all of our staff and faculty, because you're doing an excellent job out there trying to control this. And I'm just very impressed. So that's the reason it's in front of us? Does anyone have any questions about this? Well, I'm sorry, do we want to move this to consent?
Well, I think, could I speak on it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I did call Bob to raise this issue because of the rising rate of those who test positive in this county and also in this northwest area. And also, we've had board members and administrative staff as well. And so I think anything that we can do to reduce our collective gathering, that we should do it. Like I, I agree with you, Bob. The two work sessions, the committee, the whole, and then the regular board meeting are ideal, but I think we should proceed during this time of pandemic like we are in a pandemic and take every type of precaution that we can.
And I'll thank Teresa Hall for getting us the shields that she's got up here, because that's added to our protection, so I appreciate that.
Well, I can't take credit. I asked Bill Powell, and Bill Powell got you the death shields.
Well, he is the master at cleaning a microphone, so I got to say, thank you, Bill. Mr. Jackson?
You know, I think this is a good time to be doing this. I'd actually mentioned it earlier, but the timing really wasn't right because we had so many issues that had to be addressed, and we needed to have public opinion expressed on two separate days. But I do think we have now moved to the point where we can, in fact, properly consider consolidating the two meetings into one to reduce the impact of COVID, but also to reduce the apparent stress and additional time on staff and other members to be here. So I think it's a grand idea, and I think the time is now.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can we move this to consent, or do you want to stand alone?
Stand alone, please, sir.
Stand alone, okay.
Can I make a statement tonight? Can I say something?
Yes, sir, sure.
Does this allow, if we so choose to do the Zoom feature that we did originally in the pandemic?
I'd let Marnie probably give specifics, but we can do that any month.
Yes, as far as I, as long as the emergency declaration is in place for our governor, then the amended rules of the Open Meetings Act are in place and would allow for that if we should decide to do that. And that's just a matter of notification to the public through the Open Meetings Act posting.
Okay, so do we, it's going to stand alone, right? Okay. 9D, the board consider authorizing the superintendent to execute a memorandum of understanding with University of Texas at Dallas, University of Texas Health Science Center in San Antonio for speech and pathology field placement. Anyone have any questions for Dr. Macias? Okay, can we move that to consent? Thank you. 9E, the board consider approving the attached list of facilities for off-campus physical education, category one, for the 2020-2021 school year. Loretta Born's here to answer questions. Does anyone have any questions for her? All right, can we move that to consent? Thank you. 9F, the board consider approving the memorandums of understanding and interlocal agreements with partner universities, colleges, and alternative certificate programs for with partner universities, colleges, and alternative certificate programs for student teacher placements for the 2020-2021 school year. Dr. Stewart, Sharita Franklin, y'all have any questions for them? Can we move that to consent? Thank you. 9G, the board consider approving on first reading additions, revisions, and deletions to district policies. 9G1 FB Local Equal Education Opportunity, a revise. 9G2 FNG Local Students' Rights and Responsibilities, Student and Parent Complaints and Grievances, a revise. Anyone have any questions for Marnie Sims on this? Can we move this to consent? Thank you. 9H, the board consider approving on second reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies. 9H1 BF Local Board Policies, a revise. 9H2 DED Local Compensation and Benefits, Vacation Holidays, a revise. 9H3 DIA Local Employee Welfare, Freedom from Discrimination, Harassment, and Retaliation, a revise. 9H4 DMD Local Professional Development, Professional Meetings and Visitations, a delete. 9H5 ED Local Organization of Instructions, a delete. 9H6 EI Local Academic Achievement, a revise. 9H7 FD Local Admissions, a revise. 9H8 FDE Local Admissions, School Safety Transfers, a revise. 9H9 FEB Local Attendance, Attendance Accounting, revised. Can we move this to consent? Does anyone have any questions? Okay, going to consent. 9I, the board consider awarding bids and contracts and authorizing purchase orders as recommended in the posted agenda items. 9, 9I1 Automotive Fuels, 9I2 Automotive Lubricants, 9I3 Glass Repair Service Buildings, 9I4 Litting Film for Nutrition Services. That's putting lids on it, right? I'm just making sure. 915 Metal Fabrication and Repair Service, 916 Physical Education Dressware, 917 Security Courier Services, 918 Shelf Stable Milk and Meals for Nutrition Services, 919 Window Coverings. Anyone have any questions on this? Can we move this to consent? Thank you. 9J, the board consider approving constructions, proposals, and contracts paid from bond funds to the recommended contractors and authorize the superintendent or designee to execute all necessary documents related to such contracts as follows. 9J1, 2019 Francone and Owens EIA Elementary School Renovations, 9J2, 2020 Cyfair FCU Stadium Renovation, 9J3, 2020 Cypress Ridge Detention Pond Improvements, 9J4, 2020 Eldridge Ag Center Fans. I'm sorry, that was it. Anybody got any questions or concerns on that? Yes, sir, Mr. Jackson?
Roy, I guess this probably goes to you. Although the, the board book has information on these four because of the size of the contracts, please outline briefly what each of these four are intended to do.
Sure.
Thank you.
Our Francone and Owens Elementary School renovations consist of our safety and security improvements that were included in the 2019 bond program, mainly including the wall segmentation that we have included, which requires additions at those facilities. The Cyfair Federal Credit Union project is basically some miscellaneous maintenance-type work that needs to be done at that facility, and was included as part of the bond. The Cypress Ridge Detention Pond, we're trying to improve some drainage out there, so we've going in and doing some modifications to improve the drainage over there at that detention facility that we have. And then the Eldridge Ag Center Fans are some fans to put into that facility.
That's the briefest I've ever heard you.
You asked for brief.
So let's go back to Francone and Owens. You, you said something about walls. What do you mean?
Well, the wall segmentation, we presented previously to the board about how we're doing our wall segmentation at our elementary schools. We have the open plan concept in a lot of our buildings. What this is going to do is separate each of the classroom pod areas into their own pods, but they'll be self-enclosed but still have the open concept within the pod. And in some cases, because of the way the building is laid out, we actually have to do additions in order to address corridor and circulation space as well as building codes.
So, so let's go back and take a look at a couple of those. One, are you indicating that we are being conscious of air circulation even though we're putting up?
Yes, sir.
Additional walls?
That is correct.
Secondly, will this improve our hamper safety as it relates to staff and students should somebody enter the building who should not be there?
We, this is going to be a good, safe solution that we have if we had an intruder in the building so that if we had to go into lockdown mode, we can actually lock down those pod areas. Whereas in some of our buildings right now, if you walked in, those, those classroom areas are pretty well wide open. So this enables us to create some self-containment within the building and isolate different parts of the building as needed.
One additional detailed question. We have light scribes that our teachers, if they wish, can use. In elementaries, you have a, an open concept being employed, which sometimes is not enhanced with the use of the light scribe. Will the wall segmentation, will that permit greater use of our sound application systems or reduce our usage of it?
I think it will probably enhance it better than what it is now. It's, it's been a very good improvement to add those sound enhancement systems in our classrooms throughout the district. And doing this is just helping also with the acoustics as needed in the space.
Very good, thank you, sir. Uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. May we move this to consent? Okay, thank you very much. 9K, the board consider the approval and execution of the plat for the Matsky Road realignment. Any questions for Roy Sprague? Can we move this to consent? Okay, thank you. 9L, the board consider granting a temporary construction easement to Harris County for the construction of concrete sidewalks along adjacent roadways at Copeland Elementary School, Holmesley Elementary School, and Langham Creek High School. Any questions for Mr. Sprague? Can we move this to consent? Thank you. The discussion and superintendent's briefing portion of the agenda will be presented at the regular board meeting on Monday, December the 14th, 2020. Before we adjourn, I want to do a yell-out to all of our seven football teams that have gone into the playoffs tonight. There are three that are, four that are playing tomorrow. There are two, and Saturday there is one. Good luck to all of the teams that are going into the playoffs. Thank y'all for being here. We are adjourned.